All right, I'm using my new gavel, which is my fist. Good evening, everybody. For the, uh, for the record, it is, are we good? It is Thursday, March 10th, 2022. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. Uh, as always, we start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So, Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Uh, roll call tonight. We have all seven councilmembers present. Nice to see everybody this evening. Our first item on our agenda will be the consent items, which include approval of this evening's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. So I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda this evening that consists of the meeting agenda for tonight, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings.
Second, a motion by Councilmember Kula, so second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a presentation regarding Red Cross Month proclamation. Who has that?
I do, Mayor.
Councilmember Poyer, did you read that in American, please?
The American Red Cross. In times of crisis, people of Wenatchee come together to care for one another. The humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is applied by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors. In 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of the Red Cross volunteers here in Wenatchee who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who would volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. In Wenatchee, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for their families devastated by local disasters like wildfires, educating the community about home fire or natural disaster preparedness, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery, and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join the commitment to give back to our community. Now therefore, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of Wenatchee, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the law, laws of Wenatchee and the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2022, as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Wenatchee to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 10th day of March 2022. Frank J. Coontz.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. Somebody here from Red Cross? Oh, come on up. Come on up. Who's here?
Thank you, Mayor.
How are you doing?
Good. Nice to see you.
Long time no see.
Yeah, great, great. Well, thank you. On behalf of the In the Northwest Chapter, we appreciate.
Got to talk in the mic, you know.
Okay, on behalf of the In the Northwest Chapter, I was Spokane, we really appreciate the partnership that we have with the city of Wenatchee through the many years. I've been, been on the board since probably 15 years now. And the support we get from the community and the city government and all the governments really is really special. So we appreciate that and thank you for this, this proclamation, Mayor, and all the work that you do.
Nice to see you again, Doug.
You too.
Thank you. Things going good?
Very good.
Good. You still have a conference?
I am.
Excellent. Good. All right. Take care, Doug.
You wore the mask. I didn't recognize Captain Jones. Uh, next item on our agenda, citizen comment. Any members of the audience who wish to address the city council on something that's either on or not on today's agenda? We'd give you three minutes. Ask that you come up, give us your name and address for the record. Seeing note takers, we will move into our action items. Our first is regarding the Okanagan Street Community Garden Consultant Agreement. Looks like another friend of the city is with us today. Hi, Lyle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks Recreation Director for the city.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Lyle Markar, 635 Kitata Street, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
All right. And so this evening, we're here to request approval of an agreement with the Berger Partnership for our community garden project on Okanagan Street. So, um, in 2014, the city acquired the property, which you can see, it's actually just right over there, um, for a park, uh, project. Uh, 2017, we went through a public park design process where we walked the neighborhood, we asked folks what they would like to see in that site, developed six different concept plans for it, and then through the public process, we narrowed that down to number one, which was a community garden. Then this last year, we received budget approval to move ahead with the first phase of the project. Earlier this year, February, we did a request for qualifications for an engineering firm to come in and take our concept plan and take, and do all the survey work, the utility plans, the construction details, put all of that together, so basically to create the bid packages so we'd be a shovel-ready project and we could take it out to bid. So this evening, that's, we're requesting approval, um, to move ahead with that part of the project. We're estimating at this point that it'd be roughly $30,000 to $50,000 of that budget allocation to complete that work. Ideally, if everything goes well, we would have a construction cost estimate by the time we go into budget for this upcoming year, so then we would know how much specifically it will cost to construct that project when it goes to bid. I think Lyle wants to add some stuff as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, well, two years ago, over two years ago, I asked David if you could build a park there, Pocket Park, and he said it wasn't large enough for a grant. So I'm really glad to see this come along, and I'm also think this would be a great addition to the neighborhood, to the second district neighborhood, and, uh, also, I think, I'd like to see a bench, a couple benches, so people going from Jet Plaza back to the Deaconess can rest on their trail. I think it's a great idea. I'm really looking forward to happening.
Great. Thank you, Lyle. But David, any idea how much this might cost and how will we get paid for? Are you expecting all general fund dollars? Is there grant dollars for community gardens? Or does this, how does this all work? Yeah, they're very small grants for community gardens, and it's not a super sexy, big enough project, you know, for the big state grants and that type of thing. So it most likely would be general fund to construct it, for the most part.
Okay. And this money would be general fund dollars?
Yeah, and this is already in the budget?
Okay.
Yep.
I figured it was. You're pretty good about making sure all this stuff gets in the budget. Right. Councilmembers, any questions for Lyle or for Dave while we have them here?
Well, mine's more of a comment than a question. I, you know, looking at these numbers, it just seems for a consultant, that's a lot of money for a consultant to design a simple garden. You know, I, I look at the, the way the public process goes, and it seems like we spend a lot of money making a lot of plans instead of actually getting the work done. I can think of a park recently where we spent quite a bit of money getting all the plans done, and by the time it came time to build a park, we were out of money, and we had to pull a lot of money out of our general fund for that. I am not opposed to this park. I think it's great. Love to see some benches there, but to spend $30,000 to $50,000 for a consultant for a park that, or a, a public garden that is so small, just boggles my mind how we can spend that kind of money rather than just putting the work in. Yes, it needs some kind of design, but $30,000 to $50,000, in my opinion, is way too much. I will be voting no for this.
Any other comment from councilmembers?
Well, questions that go out for bid? Yeah. I guess I want to backtrack now.
Yeah.
Because it keeps the conversation.
Through the process, you don't, you don't actually go out to bid for the engineering. You have to do a request for qualifications, then you select the most qualified consultant, and then negotiate the contract after that.
But who comes up with the $50,000? That's what we, we think.
That's what we were estimating. Yeah, on the high side. You know, looking at survey work is probably $7,000 to $10,000 for the topographic survey, the, um, the utility plans and things like that, you know, right off the top, and then to develop the, uh, the construction details and then the bid packages to get everything ready to go to bid. Costs, costs money.
So name those things again? Sorry. I was listening, but I wasn't. Okay, so you're saying, survey?
Yeah, so we have survey, we have utility plans. In this particular project, there'd be electrical, water, domestic, and irrigation. Uh, you're going to have construction details for the raised beds themselves. You'll have grading plans. There'll be paving, paving plans, layout plans that go along with that because there are sidewalks and, and walkway system. You'll have a little bit of structural element for the shelter, the shade shelter, and the, uh, pad for the shed. We're, we're planning on buying a prefab shed for the tool storage. Uh, then you'll have, uh, we're not really planning on any lighting in this, other than the existing street lighting. And then there's a little bit of street elements as well, because we'll do ADA ramps on this too. So you'll have some street design elements that have to go into it.
And not unusual in projects to spend 10% to 15% on designs, architects, those sorts of things. If it was your house, if you were designing a house, or if we designed a building, right, the construction costs or the design fees are, you know, that, so I think if we're in the $250,000, $300,000 range for a construction, that this is probably what then what you would normally see for a construction project.
For the most part, other than that, that one project.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're typically 10% to 20% for architectural engineering for the project. That's, that's the range that we've seen on, on most RCO-type grant projects that we do, where we can track all that.
But includes, includes the surveying.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not, you gotta have it surveyed.
No, not in addition.
But David, let me ask you this. This is a, a community garden. Is there no way, I know it's, there's, our hands are tied because it's a government project, but is there no way to get the community to help do some of the design work and that kind of thing, where we're not spending this kind of money on raised beds and getting water and electricity out there? I, I, again, I, I've seen some really nice backyards that have many, many water features and everything else for half this price.
Yeah, and we have to be cautious on how we do it because we are a government. We have to follow those, those bid laws and procurement laws. For construction, when it comes down to that, there's some potential for, for those, you know, volunteer-type cost savings. Finding engineers unless you can find one that's going to donate their services for the whole thing, that's, that's a little more difficult to do.
But not impossible, and there's no rules that would prevent us from having that.
You know, I would have to defer to the city attorney probably on specific bid law rules or some of those things.
All right, so we've had plenty of discussion. Is there a motion from the council?
Your Honor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an agreement with the Berger Partnership for the engineering of the Okanagan Street Community Garden Project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an agreement with the Berger Partnership for the engineering of the Okanagan Street Community Garden Project. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one. Thank you, Lyle. Thanks, David. Right, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reappointments. Laura.
Your Honor, I will recuse myself on this next item.
Thank you. It's a pretty tough group you're bringing forward.
Yeah, you know, they're...
Yeah, I don't know. Might be a close vote here.
So, uh, good evening, Council. Laura Merrill, Executive Services Director. The item before you is a motion to pass Resolution 2022-7, reappointing Darcy Christopherson from the Apple Blossom Organization and Linda Haglen from the Downtown Association to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for an additional two-year term. Um, you know, as the mayor mentioned, they have been active members of this committee, and we recommend the reappointment, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Laura? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to pass Resolution Number 2022-07, reappointing Darcy Christopherson and Linda Haglen to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for a two-year term ending December 31st of 2023.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2022-07, reappointing Darcy Christopherson and Linda Haglen to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2023. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura. Subdivision Design Standards. Rob and Darcy, going to do this?
Yep.
I don't even have to do anything. You're trying to move the mouse around. The ITs guys is taking it over.
Nice work, Tim.
Yeah, so good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director, and Darcy Mariotta, our Utility Planner. We're here tonight to present to you some code updates to Title 11. So I've really, I've tried to pare this presentation down as quickly as I can. We're covering three main things in Title 11 that we corrected. The first one was, we just corrected a couple tables in the code to match other sections in the Wenatchee City Code as a, um, the deal with standards on road slopes, primarily in cul-de-sacs. We had found some, some information in the code that was incorrect, didn't match. Also, we wanted our road grades that we published to match what Shalane County is doing, which is approved by Shalane County Fire. So the fire department often tells you the maximum grade that you can have on a road or in a cul-de-sac, so we've been working with them, and so we got that fixed. It was primarily just administrative edit. The next one was, we, uh, we fixed some language about, related to public utility easements. With utility easements, I won't do a deep dive, but the width of the easement required for a utility line is dependent on the type of the utility and the depth of the utility. So as an example, a 20-foot-deep sewer main requires a larger easement than a 5-foot-deep storm line. So they vary. So we have a table in our pre-approved plans that lays out the easement requirements. So previously in the code, it said easement shall be 10 feet. Well, that doesn't fit all the types of utilities. So we fixed that, and we refer back to our pre-approved plans now. We also had some comments from Shalane County PD about that, that they suggested were some good comments, so we, we added those amendments as well. And the last thing that we did, which was really the, the heavy lift of this code amendment, was we fixed some language in here related to performance and maintenance securities. The language was sort of cumbersome to read, and it wasn't really clear what was required. So we fixed that to clearly point out that project subdivisions, if they want to record their subdivision prior to completing their public improvements, they have to post a performance bond with the city, and that's the money that they set aside to ensure that if they leave town, we have money to go in there and finish their project. We also clarified that when they're done with the project, um, they have to post a maintenance bond to ensure that their improvements, um, with, are held up for a minimum of 18 months. This parallels language that you adopted in late last year in Title IX for multifamily commercial projects, light industrial. We had many projects in Wenatchee that were being completed and final, great projects and all, but they had no maintenance security. So if a sidewalk cracked or a utility line failed in the street, we had no means to go back and ask the developer to fix that. So we fixed those things in now in the code, and, and this is sort of the final piece of that in the, um, in the subdivision ordinance, that we had to do this separately from the Title IX. Just real quick, I want to make a plug here. So when the council passes, passes things in the minis, or in the city code, it's, it's the laws that the developers have to abide by, but then there's the administrative part of it, how do we do that? And so we, we have a, we've been growing our pre-approved plans and policies. It's online, and so as an example, when a developer says, oh, I see, I have to do a maintenance bond, where do I find that? Well, that's all contained in our pre-approved plans. They will go there, there's a packet of information they can download, they can auto-fill it out. So we, we, we refer our customers to say, here's the rules, and oh, go here to find out all the administrative procedures that go along with that. So we're trying to make that more customer-friendly, easier to use for our customers. So I just wanted to kind of show you that. That's just a snapshot of our, of our pre-approved plans. You can go in there at your leisure and click around there if you're interested. So, um, in summary, we're here tonight with the two proposed amendments to Title, uh, Title 20 and 1124. The Title 21s were the grade and the easements. Those were just primarily administrative. And then the Title 24, or 1124, was for the bond language, a little bit more robust if you look in your packet on the language there, but we just, it's, it's cleaning up and clarifying things. We're recommending approval tonight of Ordinance 2022-04, um, of those chapters. I forgot to mention earlier, we did receive, uh, we did have to take these to the planning commission, and they unanimously approved, uh, the recommendations. And, um, last, I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, give a big thanks to Darcy. She did a really, I'm, I'm here talking, but she's the one that did all the work, so...
You know that, Rob.
Yeah, you know that.
You don't have to explain that to us.
Anyway, uh, again, really great job on her part on getting these things in order, having good programs in place in the department. Are there any questions for Darcy or I?
Yeah. Any questions for them? It's all pretty routine stuff. I appreciate you guys digging into the code, and when there's errors or things need to be fixed and adjusted, that you go ahead and do that, so... Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to adopt Ordinance Number 22-04, amending Title 11 of the Wenatchee City Code pertaining to subdivisions and providing for severability and, and an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and a second by Councilmember Roger Nostian to adopt Ordinance 2022-04, amending Title 11 of the Wenatchee City Code pertaining to subdivisions and providing for severability and an effective date. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Darcy. And Darcy, you're going to stay up for the Broadview Stormwater Improvement Project?
I do not. Nope. That's a brand new one. Are you drawing that time or you want me to just close and hold for a bit longer? Okay. All right, great. Good evening, Council. I'm Darcy Mariotta, Utility Planner with the City of Wenatchee, Public Works Department, and tonight I am here to request that the city council approve the capital project budget for project number 2107, Broadview Stormwater Improvements, and authorize the mayor's signature on the amendment for scope of services from Osborne Consulting, Incorporated, also known as OCI, to design stormwater infrastructure to repair the existing stormwater pond and conveyance system in Maiden Lane. A quick backstory on this project, I've been studying this for the last year, looking at the stormwater requirements out there, the existing system, and we've determined that it's in need of repair, and it's undersized with the newer development and houses that have been built in the area. Osborne Consulting has been the consultant on board doing all of that study work. Uh, they've been very thorough, and they presented us with many options for repair, and city staff has chosen one of those, and this amendment tonight approves them to start design on the option for stormwater that will first start with, uh, stormwater repairs, flow control, and then later, conveyance.
I mentioned this earlier, you think some of this may end up down in the, in the canyon? Is that where it is now?
Yeah, if you're in the Broadview neighborhood, the cul-de-sac, it's just off the neighborhood, like the level housing. If you look down on the side, it's kind of in a little ravine that drains to the main canyon.
Okay.
Doesn't really have a name.
Okay. We can name it the Darcy...
We've been calling it the Broadview Canyon, for lack of a better word.
All right. We didn't talk about this at Finance Committee. This looks like a great project. It's thinking of maybe design this year, construction next, construction next year, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Right, any questions for Darcy? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve the capital project budget for, uh, project number 2107, Broadview Stormwater Improvement, authorize the mayor's signature on the amendment for, uh, scope of services for Osborne Consulting, Inc., to design stormwater infrastructure to repair the existing stormwater pond and, uh, conveyance system in Maiden Lane. Did I say that right?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve the capital project budget for project number 2107, Broadview Stormwater Improvements, and authorize the mayor's signature on the amendment for scope of services from Osborne Consulting, Incorporated, to design stormwater infrastructure to repair the existing stormwater pond and conveyance system in Maiden Lane. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Alyssa, small change order for downstairs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager for Public Works. As in past meetings, I'd like to start out with a brief catch-up on where we're at with This is regarding the Wenatchee City Hall redevelopment project, just so we're clear. The BIM redesign that was approved in Change Orders Three, Seven, or Seven and Eight is now complete, so that process did slow progress, adding about a month to the overall schedule. The contractor is now back on track, moving forward on the interior construction. Framing is complete. Drywall installation is wrapping up on the first floor with painting starting next week, and mechanical roughing and drywall installation continues on the mezzanine level. The spring-like weather has brought the return of the site construction with sidewalk and ADA ramp, pourbacks already underway. The parking lot demolition and construction starts on Monday, and the exterior marble reinstallation is currently being evaluated by engineers and will begin upon completion of that review. Up until recently, our focus has largely been with the HVAC mechanical redesign. With this conclusion, we're now able to visualize the completed areas and are looking at design components to ensure the final outcome produces a finished product that we're comfortable with and has a professional feel throughout. This change order covers modifications
Invalid selection.
For eight different architectural type revisions. Two items make up 75% of the cost, which I'll go over. The remaining 25% are outlined in your council packet. The first item is the existing HVAC control wiring, which was originally run through the former mailroom ceiling space with no real systematic, uh, method. It was concealed above the existing ACT ceiling tile and didn't matter where it was run. The wiring now hangs through the mezzanine. The wiring now hangs through the mezzanine level in an unorganized manner. New wiring is designed to either be run through conduit or lay in cable management trays, which would make them out of the way and organized. It's necessary to treat the existing wiring in the same manner in which we, which would require running new cable and placing them within the cable tray management system. The other item for discussion is the architectural wall finishes in the existing wall areas. The project was designed to utilize the existing cast-and-place concrete walls as finished surface. These walls were previously covered with drywall that was glued to the surface. Once they demoed, it showed that putting a furred-out wall with drywall finish would be a more appropriate application. It would produce a more acceptable product, hiding more of the imperfections that were now present. This change order amounts to $62,352, $53 plus tax, which will be deducted from the city's contingency fund allocated for the project. It also adds two additional working days. It is our recommendation that the city council approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction and authorize the mayor's signature.
Do we have an updated completion date?
We do.
Can you share that with us?
The contractor is scheduled to be complete July 6.
Okay. That's the current date.
That's the current date.
Wow. This is like three months from now.
It's very close.
Okay. I thought we were looking at August or September.
We're moving in, we are looking at.
Yeah, I know that, yeah. But I, okay. I plan on being done by then, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Alyssa? We're still working within the project budget, at least in terms of the contingency. I'm assuming we'll have a couple more of these as we get to the finish line?
Yeah, we have just two or three that we're currently negotiating. They're small dollar amounts, architectural in nature again. And I don't see any others on the horizon right now.
A bunch of us went down and toured it last week. And I know Mark was there, and a lot of our staff was there. It's coming along very nicely, yeah. Going to be quite a space.
I'm pretty excited about it.
Right, any questions for Alyssa? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion for city council to approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Roger Nastian, second by Councilmember Hornby to approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction LLC and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion?
I'm just going to make my comment. I'll be voting no. I think, again, this is the public's money, and I don't think we're using it to the best of our abilities. You know, we want a rustic look in one place and furred out and make it look really nice in another place. And I, again, it needs to be functional. It doesn't need to be a palace.
Right, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one. Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoover, Peachey Street. So for the council members' memory, this was one that we took to bid last year and got no takers, correct? Just the one we went to bid last year and got nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Jeremy Hoover, Senior Utility Engineer for the city. I'm here to talk to you about the Peachey Street Basin Water Quality retrofit project. To summarize the project.
You're on pavement preservation now.
Yeah. You're taking the mouse.
There we go.
Okay, apologize. The Peachey Street project is going to be installing hydrodynamic separators in several different locations throughout the city. One of the locations is Bridge and Columbia. This is approximately what it looks like at the moment. It's right next to UPS and U-Haul rental facility. There are two locations on Peachey Street where we'll be doing work. One is at Cashmere, and the other is at the Wenatchee Avenue intersection. At Wenatchee Avenue, what you're looking at here, you can see Stan's Ready Martin in the back, next to the old grain, or silo. That is where one of our largest pipes goes out to the river. It actually goes directly underneath Stan's, directly underneath the entrance to the building. The largest hydrodynamic separator is going to be installed there, and that's going to intercept the stormwater that comes out of the entire system, spin it up, take the trash out of it, and leave what's coming out of the system much cleaner before it goes and hits.
That's an underground system?
Yes, correct. It's a large vault, for lack of a better term.
I understand vault. I don't understand that separator thing you used.
Yeah. Vortex, how's that?
No, too much, okay.
The other location is at Ferry and Shalane. This is going to have the most impact on traffic, but it's also a very important one to make the system work correctly. Ferry and Shalane, everybody's driven up Ferry and know what it looks like, but this is the location where it's going to be. There will be some diversion of traffic that's necessary, but it's, as I mentioned, it's a necessary part of the overall facility. So to summarize the project, we had this designed. It was originally started in 2014. It's gone through a couple of different iterations. The most recent work that was done on it was done by HBL. They finalized what was the previous set of plans. We sent this out to bid last year and got no takers on it. We revised the project slightly, did a little bit of optimizing, and we changed the way that we were bidding the project. There's a couple of different types of apparatuses that can be used to meet the same goal for each one of the treatment locations. And the reason that we set up the bidding the way that we did with multiple additives and alternates was to try to get an idea of what the cost would be for the installed devices. The proprietary stuff that's been in use forever, we were expecting it to be a little bit more expensive, and it turns out that that was the case. So by putting together the alternate bidding procedures, we were able to get significantly lower costs. The project budget at present is $1,440,000. That includes $1.3 million construction estimate with $56,000 in design engineering and $78,000 in construction engineering. I'm here to ask for an additional increase in that overall budget to the tune of another $142,000 for the construction and $8,000 in construction engineering. The final number will also include the standard 1% cost for the Art Fund. Grand total of the project will take it from $1.44 million to $1,591,283. That would be the budget amendment. The reason that I'm asking for that is so that we can get the upper bound of the preferences that we're, that we put out to bid. There were four preferences that were given based on the alternates and additives that were included in the project. KRCI was the lowest bidder in each one of the four scenarios, preferences one through four. Their lowest bid, which is the least desirable preference, preference four, came in at $1,267,478. So that is within the engineer's estimate for construction cost. The high-end preference number one came in at $1,441,916, hence the revised construction estimate and construction engineering. The difference that comes into play between those two items is basically the quality of the improvements that we're going to be able to make. The lowest preference will have the least amount of treatment of the stormwater runoff that goes through the Cashmere section and that goes through Peachey. Since we're doing this project with as much as we're going into ripping up these intersections, it makes more sense to be able to put the higher-end pieces of equipment in the ground to get the best level of treatment possible. The original design, as I said, included each one of these, but in hopes of being able to reduce the cost and actually build it and get some buyers on this or some contractors, that's why we changed around the options. At present, the concept, if we decide to go with preference four, would be to award the contract to KRCI and begin construction, looks like going to be this summer. If we do preference one, if we add enough budget to allow for preference one, we'd still be looking at construction this summer. We would award the bid based on preference four and then proceed with change orders to add the additional treatment to achieve preference one. That is because the way that we structured the bidding process, we have to award at the lowest value of the project cost that is within the original engineer's estimate that was presented at the time of bid opening. So I know that was a whole lot.
A lot.
More of the, more complex of a project in terms of the way that we structure the bidding than what we usually do. The grant agreement with the Department of Ecology pays for a portion of the costs, 75%, with 25% match, along with an additional $40,000 grant that has no match, both from the stormwater, excuse me, I apologize, the Stormwater Financial Assistance Program. The $40,000 grant is from the Green retrofit initiative. So all of that being said, we can build it under current budget, but we would be better off, and the quality of the water that we generate will be better if we go with the higher-end set of devices.
Jeremy, I don't know if you've mentioned it tonight, but I know you mentioned it earlier today, two water treatment spots versus one. Is that a correct statement?
Well, we're actually looking at four spots. We've got the Bridge and Columbia location. We've got the Ferry and Shalane location. We've got Peachey at Wenatchee Avenue, and we've got Peachey at Cashmere. One of the locations at Peachey, and there's two locations at Cashmere and Peachey. One of them would not be built at all if we chose preference number four. The other one on Cashmere would be built to a much lower standard.
What's the stormwater in that area now? Is there stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
There's stormwater in each one of these. This is a retrofit of the existing storm drain system. Think of it like adding a manhole onto an existing pipe.
Got it, okay. And this vault, even a human can walk into it and do stuff with it?
It's huge. The big one is very, very large. But the idea is that we'll be able to clean these out with a vector truck. We're not planning on sending anybody into these unless something catastrophic happens.
Got you, okay.
Did anybody run the number? I'm just curious, what, what was the difference in the lowest to the one that's more desirable? Anybody figure out the number on that? I was curious.
From the low bid contractor, I'm going to get this correct for you here. KRCI was the low bid contractor under each of the preferences. The lowest bid, which is preference four, was $1,267,478. Their bid for preference one was $1,441,916. And again, I want to emphasize that that is largely grant-funded, and Stormwater Fund will be participating to an extent in this, but it is mostly Ecology's money that we'll be using to build.
So from a process, we are awarding the contract for the lowest amount, which is $1,267. We're giving Jeremy some budget authority to go up to as high as $1,441 if he believes the change orders are warranted. He's telling you today that he thinks the change orders are warranted. But for process, that's what we're doing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I just like the idea of having multiple things in case something goes bad.
Yeah.
And just kind of.
And I think this is a way.
Bad 20 years from now. But I'm not mean today.
They should last longer than that.
Yeah, but I, that's my thinking behind it when I'm $180,000 difference. I don't know. I just throw in a number.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Hoover? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion for the city council to award the contract for construction of Peachey Street Basin Water Quality retrofit project 1903 to KRCI LLC Incorporated in the amount of $1,267,478. And further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city, and the city council approve a budget increase to allow for additional enhanced pretreatment of the stormwater runoff by inclusion of two additional hydrodynamic separators, HDS II and HDS III, as part of the project scope.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyar, second by Councilmember Cuevas to award the contract for construction of the Peachey Street Basin Water Quality retrofit project 1903 to KRCI LLC, Inc., in the amount of $1,267,478. And further authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city, and for the city council to approve a budget increase, as shown in tonight's packet, to allow for additional enhanced pretreatment of the stormwater runoff via inclusion of two additional hydrodynamic separators, HDS II and HDS III, as part of the project scope. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeremy. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
All right. Pavement preservation for 2022. Mr. Jammerman.
Good. All right. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here on behalf of Jake Lewin, who manages our pavement preservation program. He decided that Hawaii was more fun than a council meeting, so. So the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee have both seen this. I'm going to go through this real quickly. This slide is a, our pavement preservation slide. We're currently at a 70 pavement condition index, and this is where we want to keep our pavement within the city. Current funding that we have allocated is 1.2 million per year. Unless we infuse some more money into that, that this line right here shows the decline in our pavement. So we just always want to keep this in front of you during the year and at budget. So in 2022, I identified 18 segments that we should study for pavement preservation. The initial estimate for those 18 segments was 3.3 million. We hired a consultant, KPG. They, we had a two-point, roughly a $2.5 million budget, and KPG came back and said, you're going to need to cut some of those 18 out. So we reduced it to 14 segments. We got it down to about 2.5, roughly 2.6 million to begin the design on. We got 50% done with the design, and KPG came back and said, based on current estimates, some thicker overlay we're going to need to do, you're going to be about somewhere between $800 and $1 million short to pull off those 14 segments. So we decided to take a timeout, come to the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee, and ask if the committees were interested in either recommending more money into the budget to try to do the 14 segments or to cut further back on the program. We would have to cut approximately 1.3 miles out of the overlay. Both the committees recommended that we, if you use more money into the program to try to hit that 14 segments. And so there's two options tonight. One is to reduce that by the 1.33 miles approximately, stay within the $2.5 million budget, or to add, request additional $1 million to the preservation budget from either the Finance Director and/or the American comment on this, but we can take it from REIT or from the general fund and go ahead and up that budget to about 3.5 million. Always important to note that the preservation is not just blacktop. It's also replacement of ADA ramps. It's about a half a million dollars this year in ADA ramp upgrades that we're required to do per federal law. Any questions?
Well, these are cut out and repaved.
Grind and overlay.
Grind and overlay, which means you'll get a smoother surface. But with what that comes, ADA requirements. And we've been sort of, I think, pretty consistent over the last four or five years. When they've come in for a project, we've thrown more money at them to keep our preservation budget in line. It's not a permanent funding, but I think we've been pretty consistent. If we've got extra money, that we've done our best to try to get more of these streets done. So the Finance Committee talked about it today, and they were in favor. And the Public Works Committee saw it last week, and I think they were in favor. I, now Brad, and you've got to figure out which bucket it comes from, whether it's REIT or general fund or ARP funding. But if the council approves it, I think we guys can figure out which bucket it comes from.
Rob, my question is, I know asphalt is based on the price of oil, and we've seen a significant.
a significant increase in that. Do you know when these estimates were created?
They were, and I don't know if Jake knows, Jacob, but I know that they're in the last sixty to ninety days. So there is a note in the, in the presentation that Jake Lewin sent me that said it did account for oil prices increases, although I don't know if it's-
This much?
What we just saw in the last three weeks. You have anything to add to that?
Yeah, they were in the last month or so. The, the one, as, as prices continue to be volatile, one thing we can do is there's a, a special provision that we can include in our contract that has a, a price adjustment factor that goes along with, with the oil. And so what that would allow us to do is say, you know, take some of the risk off of a contractor if they were bidding, let's say in, in April, and intend to do most of their curb ramp work at first, because that's typically how you want to see it done, and they're not paving until July. Having that cost adjustment factor in there will allow them to take the, some of the risk off that, you know, if oil prices go through the roof, we will be paying them what market rate oil is at that time. Obviously, if that goes well beyond our budget, we would be looking at a change order to, to, to stay within the budget so that we're not, you know, paying exceedingly high. But there is some, I think that would be my recommendation at this point is to, if, if conditions stay as they are, is to try to allow or include something like that in our contract so that the contractors aren't, you know, having to, having to throw a wild number at that something.
So that, that sounds good, but to me, it's got to go both ways.
It does.
It does?
It does.
Go both ways?
Yes. And it's-
And also, somebody mentioned earlier, Robbie mentioned earlier, the timing might be good to get bids?
Only in that, you could add to this, but that WashDOT's put out their first preservation out to bid already, and we're going to be coming after that, but before their next one. And so Jake Lewin is talking to the state and other pavers, they feel like our timing of our project is really good as far as getting good bids. Is that, you want to add anything to that?
But yeah, with, with oil prices, it's, it's anybody's guess right now. In, in terms of lining up work for the contractors, like Rob was saying, we're going to line up pretty well.
So at this point, you're asking for a budget amendment, right? At some point later, you'll come back, come back with approval of a contract, right? And at that point, if the council decides that, for whatever reason, that's not acceptable to them, they can certainly have that choice then. Right now, it's a budget issue, can we take another $1 million from one, from our $16 million savings account and put it towards a preservation program? We hope it's this year, but I think that's the question for today is, do we want to put a million dollars into it? They'll get the chance to approve the contract if it's acceptable to them in the next, what, 60 days?
We intend to advertise the project in mid-April at this point.
Okay.
And so we'd be coming back to you and me.
Yeah, so 60 days, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as we get a way to pump the brakes and we've got some risk management built in.
Yeah, and you'll see the contract, and I think it'll be, it'll be interesting to see the contract, right? To see how we all fit into this. Yeah. All right, any questions for either Jake or Jacob or Rob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion for city council to approve the project budget amendment for the 2022 pavement preservation project number 2110.
Second.
Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Poyer, to approve the project budget amendment for the 2022 pavement preservation project number 2110. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Who's doing the utility construction agreement?
That would be me.
Everyone who's on the list isn't here. Right? Jake's not here, Ryan's not here. Jeremy is here. All right.
Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager, here tonight to talk to you about a, a potential agreement with the DOT. So as you are all aware, the DOT has a planned roundabout at the intersection of US Two and Easy Street. The intent was for that project to occur this year. They have since delayed that until 2023. At this point, they're planning to advertise the project in December for 2023 construction, like I said. So we, the city has sewer infrastructure that runs through that intersection, going from the north side on Easy Street, south to the Keymark Plaza area. And so we have a manhole located at the southeast quadrant of that intersection that's currently outside of the traveled way. As the roundabout gets constructed, that footprint will widen significantly to the point where our manhole is then in the traveled way of the new roundabout. And so the DOT has requested that we relocate that manhole in coordination with DOT staff. It will be more efficient for us to have that work included in the DOT's construction contract. And so this agreement tonight would formalize that and, and allow for that work to be included in their construction contract next year. There's efficiencies from a mobilization standpoint, from a traffic control standpoint, and so our recommendation is that we move forward with this agreement. In terms of fiscal impact, so it's, it's a, at this point, a $98,000 agreement. That's based on estimated construction costs. We will know, once bids come in, that will be adjusted. So if there's, I think there's a 25% float on that as part of this agreement, so if that number changes significantly, we'd be back here asking for your approval. So if you have any-
This is coming out of our sewer fund.
Correct. Yeah, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those, either regarding the roundabout or the sewer relocation.
Any questions for Jacob? Sounds like we're being good partners. All right, entertain a motion if we had one.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the utility construction agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the utility construction agreement forms.
Second. Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Culos, to approve the utility construction agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the utility construction agreement forms. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. Mayor's report. I think mostly what's been happening in the mayor's office, I think, is Confluence Parkway, Confluence Parkway, and then Confluence Parkway have been sort of the three things we've been working on over the last three or four weeks. Obviously, we got some good news out of the, our friends in Olympia. The $16 billion package passed today, was voted on and passed by both the House and the Senate, so it's on the way to the governor's office for signature. We have an $85 million line item that's in the project list. It's listed as infra-match and specifically indicates 2021 infra-award, which is our award, and it's $85 million, which is the amount we asked for. So we feel confident that that's our project, and we've talked with Senator Leas and others who have indicated that that is our project. So I won't tell you why it didn't say Confluence Parkway, because I'm not in charge of writing these things. I don't care if it said Valentine's Day card. If they said it's our money, then, then it's our money. So we are really excited about that. That means we do have a fully funded project for this side of the river, which means everything in and around Denny's, the two underpasses at McKittrick and Miller, the roundabout by St. Mill, the road on its way out, additions to the trail system, the new bridge, the highway that runs, as Laura told you, on the, by the, between the railroad tracks in McDougal and takes out a little piece of McDougal and then grabs the main road and heads out to Shalane. So I think there'll be great efficiencies from city staff and whoever we hire to do all this work that we now have a, a full project to go from. So we are super excited. That was a lot of work, as you know, three weeks ago. Not only did the list come out without our name in it, but then there was a couple of amendments to, to put us in it, and those both got rejected as well. But we continued to work as a team, as a local team, and we were hopeful that the way it turned out was the way it turned out, which in the conference agreement, it would just sort of show up, and that's exactly what happened. So kudos to, there's been a local team working on this, obviously Richard Durrock from Link, Jeff Wilkins from the Transportation Council, Laura, who has been doing incredible work not only on NEPA but just keeping all of this stuff sort of going. It's been a real effort by the three of them. Obviously, Senator Hawkins worked really hard on this. He actually voted yes for both of the bills today. And then to some, to some degree, you know, Mike Steele and Keith Gainer on the House side, but, and then a really big shout out to Congresswoman Kim Schreier, who worked her tail off for this project. She worked hard to get the federal funding. She didn't want to see a state project happen that didn't have money for Confluence Parkway, and she did yeoman's work in, in getting this to the finish line. So kudos to all of them. Big relief for us, sort of a second miracle, you know? Everyone said we could never get an infra-grant, and we did. And then, you know, you're not going to get $85 million here, and of course, we figured out how to do it. So kudos to all those folks who are working hard, and we'll probably wait till the governor signs the legislation before we do our press release. I know Senator Hawkins has had a couple out. And so now, at the same time we were turning our attention to how to get this funded, we're also working through the NEPA stuff. The PUD is doing some outreach and public meetings at the end of March, so we encourage you and your friends to send letters and emails and communicate with the PUD commissioners, who ultimately have to approve the project through the NEPA process, and it was called a letter of concurrence. And so they are starting that process. I'm not sure how long it will take. You may have seen Rufus Woods at an editorial in the newspaper last week. I think there'll be some other editorials taking place over the next couple of weeks. And so again, working both of those fronts, again, they're both huge. Obviously, this is a mega project now, 170, 187 million with our contribution, so that's a whopping project. And so working both sides of that have been a full-time job for the mayor's office amongst the other things that we've been sort of following and working on.
Good news.
Yeah, I'm super, super excited, and the same level of excitement when we came to you and said we got the infra-grant was the same level of excitement we had yesterday when we read the, the list and it was on it and got, and confirmed it with the right people that you're supposed to confirm it with, and so, pretty exciting day. Laura, what, what else is going on?
I'm choking on water. Sorry you don't want to hear.
That's all right.
As the mayor said, Confluence Parkway, Confluence Parkway. So March 19th, we are doing a walk tour of the new improvements to the Apple Capital Loop Trail. So that's next Saturday at 8:00 AM. Come join us. We'll be at Wala Walla at the flagpole, and we're, we'll literally just walk up the Apple Capital Loop Trail, point out where the improvements are going to be, point out the new alignment. So it's a really good opportunity to-
Is that Saturday the 19th?
Yes.
8:00 AM?
8:00 AM, yes. It's a really good opportunity to kind of see it for yourself. It's, I think, the times that I've taken people out there, they really start to understand it and start to visualize it and being out there and going, here's where Confluence Parkway is going to be, here's where the trail is, here's where it used to be. It's really helpful in, in envisioning that and understanding that footprint. So invite you all to come on the 19th, and then as the mayor said, the PUD will be hosting an open house on March 30th. Those details are still forthcoming, but please save the date for that as well. That's it.
Council members, what do we have going on on your?
Well, nobody can top that. Eha, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I'll say that we can celebrate and do the wine walk this weekend for the Downtown Association, so buy your tickets. They're limited, so I don't think there's too many more left, so if you're interested in the wine walk downtown, 12 different wineries.
Oh, cool. Okay.
I did go to the Shalane Douglas Transportation Council this morning, and on, one of the things that's been discussion was city voting rights. And I took the position, you'd have to have 14 inter-local agreements to, to change things. I just took the position that the city Wenatchee would not approve that because that would devalue. It's already, we have 35,000 people, there's 10 votes, and I'm like, well, we already devalued it anyway, so I didn't feel that we should give up that control. So I, I said I don't believe that, that we would get an inter-local agreement passed through the city council. There's a couple other people, too. You had to have every single one that would agree to it. And Commissioner Kevin Overbay said the same thing. He wouldn't, he, he wouldn't do it all, so, so it wouldn't be just us. There's a few others that would say no. There's also an update on the Regional Bike Authority Committee, and that's kind of exciting to see how that progresses down the road.
Yeah, so the way that was formed, I think there's either seven, maybe seven voting members, both the two major cities and two counties, WashDOT, the port, and the tribes. And so you pay dues, like we do other places, so I don't want the dues, they're 30,000, 25,000, whatever they are. And of course, Rock Island decided that they wanted to vote, and so they wanted to put $25,000 in the pot and get to vote. And it's like, no, you're, you only represent 1,000 people. We represent 35,000 people, right? And so if the system is not broken, and you could add Intiatt and then Rock Island and then Shalane and Kashmir, and then you go vote, and all the money goes to, all our federal pass-through money goes to all those small cities, right? They always get something. We always allocate plenty of dollars to Rock Island and Shalane, and all the small cities always get projects from us when they ask, so.
One thing did shake. We, they all come to the table, so it's not like they don't listen and hear and approve their projects. Matter of fact, Leavenworth mayor got some money-
Yep.
-today, too.
Yep, yep.
And the other part of the money came from the Shalane Douglas Transportation.
Yeah.
So it's definitely encouraged as a, as a, as a community-
Yeah.
-to do this.
Keith, Mark, Travis? Lynn, anything from you?
I do. Home, the Home River Homeless Task Force met Tuesday, and our next meeting will be in June, but we may need to do some extra meetings just because we're in the process of negotiating and working on the Little Barrier Shelter, and things will need to be decided there. We got a preliminary number on the pit count, it was 122 homeless. This does include RVs because they have to be considered by law, included in that. Powerhouse Ministries was short on some funding, and we voted, and I'm trying to remember, is Glenn still here? Was it 3,000?
2,000.
2,000. It was 2,000.
Okay.
We're going to make it up for them.
That's sort of the day shelter part of this.
Yeah, and this, they're in East Wenatchee, but it's really important because this provides a place for people to go during the day rather than hanging out on the street. Also, during cold or really hot months, they're able to get out of the weather.
Anybody else?
Well, since our friends didn't show up tonight. Remember seven-ish?
Yep.
Wind week from tonight?
Yep.
On a rondo for the country's-
So the city council, the city council meeting's meeting next Thursday at seven, out in front of McGlenn's, which is the, not technically a meeting, but it's the St. Patrick's Day parade, shortest parade in the world.
It's our judging platform.
Yeah, yeah. Looking forward to doing that again, and thanks to Dave and Tom for putting that on. Yeah. Yeah, so we won't meet next Thursday, we'll meet again on the 24th for regular session. Anything else for the, going to the order? All right, we're adjourned.